Long 10 seconds. Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting the Planning and Zoning Commission order. Would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this point in time, I'd like to introduce the members of the commission that are here this evening. To my far right is an alternate on the commission Gina Morgenstein. Next to Gina is Jeff Cohen, a commission member. And to my immediate right is Jim Fitzsimmons, also a commission member. To my far left is Rocco Madarazzo, who is also a member of the commission. And at the lower table is Cynthia Kleist, our recording secretary. And next to Cynthia is Casey Costello, our town planner, and Jim Seidler, the chairperson of the commission. Our next order of business to approve the minutes of our meeting of May 8th, 2017. At this point in time, I entertain a motion on the minutes, or if someone has some corrections, additions, also would entertain that.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the minutes as submitted.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and abstentions, I was not at the meeting, so I abstained from that vote. Which brings us now to our first public hearing. It's a special permit revision for 24 additional parking spaces in Nafis and Young at 37 Harris Road, Pilgrims Harbor. And Mr. Madarazzo, if you please read the legal notice and note all correspondence for the record. If the applicant and/or his representative, please come forward to begin preparing for your presentation.
Mr. Chairman, we have a legal notice, number 403-17, special permit revision OSPRD for Nafis and Young to allow the addition of 24 parking spaces as part of a road reconstruction project at 37 Harrison Road, Pilgrims Harbor. And we have an interdepartmental referral, application 403-17, received on April 20th, Sorry, received by, signed by environmental planner. Interdepartmental referral, application 403-17, received April 24th, 2017, signed by...
Seems like that's the phantom again, Casey?
Fire marshal.
It's, who is it? It's the fire marshal, is that correct?
One B is the fire marshal, yes.
Again, could you just ask him to place his title on the document?
We also have a memorandum to Casey Costello from Aaron O'Hare, environmental planner, received April 26th, 2017. Interdepartmental referral, application 403-17, received April 27th, 2017, signed by Rob Baltromidis, town engineer. I can never say his last name. Inter-office memorandum to Casey Costello, town planner, from Eric Kruger, senior engineer, received April 27th, 2017. A letter from Nafis and Young regarding special permit, application 403-17, I'm sorry, to Nafis and Young, from Casey Costello, town planner, dated April 27th, 2017. Memorandum to Casey Costello, town planner, from Aaron O'Hare, environmental planner, received May 5th, 2017. A letter dated, let me see, to Casey Costello, town planner, received June 2nd, 2017, from Nafis and Young Engineers, Inc. That would be it.
Thank you, Mr. Madarazzo. Before we get started, Mrs. Morgenstein, until Mr. Vanoyd comes to the meeting, if you'd just please sit in on all the applications. With that, if you would please introduce yourself and begin your presentation.
There's a microphone right on that table. There's a, should be a switch either on the top or bottom. I have no idea. How's that sound?
Oh, you sound great.
Very good, thank you. Yes, good evening, my name is Jim Galligan. I'm a professional engineer, registered in the state of Connecticut. I'm the president of Nafis and Young Engineers. We're located at 1355 Middletown Avenue over in Northford, Connecticut. Thank you. The application you have in front of you tonight is from the Pilgrims Harbor Homeowners Association. Just to give you some background, the, for those who don't know where this location is, this is Harrison, Harrison Road out here. The area on, what is it, where the island green is, that's not part of the application. The application area is what they call the older section of Pilgrims Harbor. Here is the clubhouse, right in here. The highway is down in here. The golf course is on this side and on this side. And there's another condominium development located here. We did post a sign out on the front of the parcel, out on Harrison, and also gave Casey the green notices for the public hearing. About a year ago or so, the homeowners association got funding to reconstruct the roads, the roadways and the driveways and the parking areas and the sidewalks and so on. And now they're trying to get that process moving. The reason why we're in front of you tonight is because the, there are about two dozen parking space locations that they'd like to add. And as in doing that, it changes the site plan. And the original approval back from the 70s included the site plan as part of the approval process. As part of the renovations, they're going to be doing the roadways over, the curbs over, the sidewalks over. They're also taking down several of the existing garages and then replacing them in exactly the same location, exactly the same configuration. Even the interior of the existing garages is going to be duplicated with the new construction. All of the roadways are going to be replaced back exactly where they are. There's going to be no changes. Basically, what they're going to do is they're going to come in, dig out the roadway, put in, excuse me, put in a geotextile fabric, put in some gravel, put in some processed aggregate, and then pave and then curb the roads and the parking areas. If, just to give you an idea about the spacing location, again, this is the clubhouse here. This is the pool, the tennis courts here. They're going to add five spaces in this location. And then throughout the site, they're going to add three or one or two spaces that are based on the need that they've identified from the residents throughout the site. Down in this corner, down here, they're actually hoping to add nine more spaces because if you look at the layout here, this green is one of the roads. But you can see this section of homes really has no parking at all. So they want to add some spaces over in here to provide parking for the people who live in that area. That's really the applications in front of you. It's really just to add the parking spaces throughout the site. And I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have.
Any commission members with any questions for the applicant at this time? Yeah, Ms. Cohen.
Just one question, since this is from, I guess, the original application was the 70s, you know, the parking you're adding, are there any, you know, handicap parking requirements that, you know, were not in place in the 70s that we need to provide?
Well, the, right now, they accommodate anybody who has handicap needs with handicap spaces. There are a lot of those because of the age of the complex, there's a lot of the areas that just really aren't, you know, like for instance, in this area here, because of the steepness of the grade are not accessible to start with. But if a handicapped person comes in and wants to have a unit and can access that unit, then they provide parking for them as necessary.
Thank you.
Other commission members? Ms. Fitzsimmons?
Can you tell me, from the original plan to what we're looking at this evening, does it, what the number change in parking spots is?
Yes, actually.
Another going larger, but I'm...
Yeah, there's actually, according to the original plan, as best as we could count, there were 126 parking spaces. And as of, and these extra 24 would help, you know, help alleviate, you know, just as an example, this little bundle over in here is to help these people that live right in this area here, to be able to, to be able to just have some extra parking.
So it's 24 total new?
24 total new.
In addition to the 126?
The 126 was apparently, I'll use the word apparently, apparently what was approved, there are actually about 154 spaces there now. And those extra spaces are indispersed all over the site.
Anyone else, commission members? Casey, before I go out to the public, any comments that you may have?
Just quickly, the, what we had talked about, and I think what Mr. Fitzsimmons touched on was, I wanted to make sure that we were sort of relatively aligned with what was originally approved. Obviously, some things were done a little bit differently, so I wanted to make sure that we were still in compliance. And also, this is an opportunity for the commission to sort of true up what's on the ground versus what was approved. But I didn't want you to be in a position of being asked to approve something that didn't comply. So it appears that everything is in good shape. We get some additional parking. The engineering department didn't have any objections, so I think we're good to go. I would ask for a bond of $3,000.
So Casey, just one question. The primary domain noncompliance was the number of the parking spaces. There were more than what was originally approved, is that correct? Or are there other minor things that were there?
It appears that they, in some places, they didn't quite do the spaces, in some places, they did more spaces. I asked Mr. Galligan to do an overall comparison count, so, and I think that is all, the 150 number...
Six, yeah.
That's on full nine by 18 spaces.
That's correct.
Yeah, so...
But again, but the major issue with the noncompliance was more the parking spaces?
Yeah.
The number of parking spaces?
Yeah, and more just because they were in different spots and things like that.
And I guess Rob is taking, our town engineer, and with the parking, with the additional parking spaces where they may have been put, there's no issues with drainage or anything like that, is that fair to say?
Yes, and that also includes the new spaces.
Okay, good. This is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on the application? If so, please come forward, state your name and address. Seeing none, I will just, sure, bring it back to the applicant.
Yes, Chairman, there was one other thing, the parking spaces we identified does not include the garages. So there are, you know, a whole host of garages in addition to the 156 spaces.
And those garages were shown on the original plans?
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, good. Uh, there's, yes, Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have one question. I'm looking at the plan, and this was, I think, one of the first condos in Wallingford. What's missing from this plan than we see in other condos is, believe it or not, snow removal area. Because when people add parking spots, we don't want them to be used for snow removal. Are we getting a final plan, or is this the final plan?
To be, this is the final plan. The only changes to the existing plan is just these, just these couple of spaces.
Could you, could you add to the plan just a snow removal area?
Sure, oh absolutely.
Just so there's no, you know, you don't want to add parking spots just for snow. I mean, I know it's 90 something outside today, but we do get snow here, so.
Yep, absolutely.
Most of the plans include some type of, you know, so that...
Snow disposal area, no problem at all.
Yeah, okay.
Absolutely.
Just one change.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. If there's no more comments from the applicant, there's no additional comments from the commission members or from Casey, I would call for a motion to close our public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I move we close the public hearing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? And at this point in time, I entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I move the commission approve a special permit, OSPRD revision for Nafis and Young to allow parking and roadway improvements modifications at 38 Harrison Road, Pilgrims Harbor, has shown on plans entitled Parking and Roadway Plan, Pilgrims Harbor Road Reconstruction, Wallingford, Connecticut, dated March 27th, 2017. Revised version stamped, received June 8th, 2017, Wallingford Planning and Zoning, subject to the following conditions. Number one, comments of the town of Wallingford Department, Environmental Planner, dated 4/2617 and 5/517. Number two, comments of the town of Wallingford Water and Sewer Senior Engineer, dated 4/2617. Number three, posting of an S and E bond to the amount of $3,000 as recommended by the town of Wallingford Town Planner. And number four, revision to plan to include snow shelf and snow removal area to be depicted on the final plan.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. We have a motion on the application, and we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen, voting beginning with Mrs. Morgenstein, please.
Yes.
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 And yes, application's been approved, have a good evening. Before I go to, you're welcome, before I get to our next public hearing, I was a bit remiss, there are several items on our agenda that will not be heard this evening. The first is number four, it's a re-subdivision for two lots for Adams Landing Development, LLC at 90 South Turnpike Road. The next is item number six, it's a site plan for Green Envy Products at Sterling Drive. And number seven, a site plan for Green Envy Products at 9 Tankwood Road. And then new business is number nine, a site plan modification, parking reconfigure, additional two parking spaces for Adams Landing Development at 90 South Turnpike Road. And the final one is item number 10, it's a site plan, expanded natural gas storage, M. Jeremiah, 199 to 205 Church Street, Yalesville. Again, those various items will not be heard this evening, so if there is anyone in the audience that came specifically for those items, they will not be heard. That brings us now to our next public hearing, which is a special permit retail residential at 209 Colony Road, LLC slash 209 dash, rather, slash 900, 200, 902 South Colony Road. And again, Mr. Madarazzo, please read the legal notice and note all correspondence for the record, please.
Mr. Chairman, we have a legal notice, number 404-17, special permit, change from one nonconforming use to another for 902 Colony Realty, to change the use from the existing two-family house and retail building with one apartment above to a retail building with three apartments above, and to construct a 9,750 square foot of additional retail building at 900-902 South Colony Road, and to transfer land from 920-940 South Colony Road to 900-902 South Colony Road. Notices, we have a letter regarding special permit application 404-17, dated March 24th, 2017, to 902 Colony Realty, LLC, from Casey Costello, town planner. Interdepartmental referral, application 404-17, received May 24th, 2017, signed by the fire marshal. A letter dated April 28th, 2017, to 902 Colony Realty, from Casey Costello, town planner. Interoffice memorandum to Casey Costello, town planner, from Eric Kruger, senior engineer, received April 27th, 2017. A memorandum to Casey Costello, town planner, from Aaron O'Hare, environmental planner, received April 26th, 2017. A checklist, no date. An interdepartmental referral, application 404-17, signed by, I'm going to go with fire marshal again?
There's the B.
Received, April 21st, 2017. A letter dated April 22nd, 2017, from OCC Group Incorporated, to Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission. A memorandum to Planning and Zoning Commission, Mr. James Seidler, chairman, from Rob Baltromidis, received April 27th, 2017. A letter from OCC Design Consortium, LLC, received May 4th, 2017. A letter from OCC Group Incorporated, received April 24th, 2017. A memo to Casey Costello, town planner, from David V. Carson, received May 4th, 2017.
That would be it. Thank you, Mr. Madarazzo. If the applicant and/or his representative, please introduce themselves and begin their presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For your record, my name is Dennis Sennaviva. I'm an attorney with the Sennaviva Law Firm. I represent the owner, applicant, 902 Colony Realty, LLC. To my right is Don DiMartino, a manager and member of that entity. To my left is Dave Carson, he's a project engineer with the OCC Group. The property, as the application suggests, is 900-902 South Colony Road. It has been reconfigured, or will be hopefully, as part of an approval process. Zone CB40. Mr. DiMartino also owns the entity that owns the budding property to the south, which is 920-940 South Colony Road. Parcel will be 1.9596 acres in size after a lot line revision. It is currently developed, just by way of history, with an existing 1,138 square foot two-family house located along the southerly portion of the property, a small garage and a 2,315 square foot mixed-use building with retail use on the first floor and one apartment on the second floor. This building is located along the northerly boundary. Currently, the second floor of that building, that second mixed-use building, second floor is half the size of the first floor. Now, the applicant went to the zoning board of appeals under appeal 16-023 for permission to raise the existing two-family nonconforming building and garage and extend the second floor on the existing mixed-use building. And we'll send Mr. Carson up to the easel in a minute to go through that, but that was our request to the ZBA. In order to relocate the two dwelling units from the raised building, the proposal was to extend the second floor on the existing mixed-use building, again, to relocate two apartments to that building. The ZBA did grant the variance, the request, primarily because the proposed plan as submitted to the zoning board of appeals eliminated six existing zoning nonconformities, including perhaps most importantly, removing existing retail parking spaces that were located or are currently located both within the state right-of-way and within your front yard setback. And under the new configuration, where all of the parking spaces and the buildings themselves are accessed through the main entrance on 920-940 South Colony, it appeared to be, and certainly, it seems to be an agreement amongst your staff and the state of Connecticut, a much better layout than having cars back out into South Colony from the existing mixed-use building. So tonight, the applicant proposes, again, to raise the existing two-family building and the freestanding garage, extend the second floor on the existing mixed-use building in order to house the two units that are lost from the raised building, revise the overall parking layout for the mixed-use building so that it complies now with your zoning requirements, certainly a much safer layout, and to construct a new 9,750 square foot retail building with the committed parking all in compliance with your zoning regulations. Access to the new building and to the reconfigured or additional sized mixed-use building will be provided by a large main entrance currently serving 920 and 940 South Colony. A layout designed, again, supported by the town engineer in his report due dated April 27th, 2017, is point number three in his report. It's also been reviewed, and Dave Carson will go through some of that review preliminary, of course, by DOT, because now that, should this be approved, now that there will be access to 902 South Colony through 920 South Colony, there will be a review by OSTA because 920 has a current permit, and that'll be reviewed. And again, preliminarily, the state has indicated to Mr. Carson and Mr. DiMartino that they much prefer the proposed layout than, again, having vehicles exit 902, either backing into South Colony or entering and exiting in a more difficult location. There will be a use of common access between 920 and 902, and Dave will show that when he gets up to the easel. Again, that's sort of, I think it's consistent with your goals, certainly those of DOT, minimizing curb cuts, it's removing the curb cut and minimizing the traffic flow between those parcels that has to go onto South Colony. So we've, we've tried to be as prepared as we can, Mr. Chairman, for tonight's meeting. We have met with your staff, she's been, Casey in particular, very generous of her time, as has the Department of Engineering. And I think the plan as revised is a, is a good plan, one that has addressed many of the concerns that your planner had. Now, we're here on 902, 900-902 South Colony, but we are accessing, should you permit it, through 920. And of course, there were some lingering concerns that staff had about the operation of 920-940 South Colony. We were here some time ago on that property. And one of the issues tonight, as Casey points out in her memo, is discussion about some outside storage for the Connecticut food mark that's there. And Dave can lay that out or show it to you, please, on the, on his plan. So, again, in terms of 902 South Colony, we think that this layout is far superior to what's there currently, it's far more attractive. It's the area of South Colony that oftentimes is the last to get sort of the little brightening, and we think this is a nice step and hopefully a catalyst as things move forward. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask Mr. Carson to go to the easel.
Perhaps I should start by dealing with the existing conditions plan. The two-family house, which Attorney Sennaviva was discussing, is located here, a separate detached garage, and this is the mixed-use building, the 2,315 square foot mixed-use building, which has a second floor apartment on it. The present parking lot for all of those structures is right here, with virtually two-thirds of the area actually within the state right-of-way, two curb cuts right here. So that kind of brings us up, this, this is the existing entrance and the existing parking lot for 920 South Colony, back when this parking lot was reconfigured. The design of this entrance was done in conjunction with Connecticut DOT at that time, designing it with the understanding on our part, the possibility of future development on this. It has, the new plan, as Attorney Sennaviva mentioned, has been reviewed by the district office of DOT, and they were very kind in actually sending it up to OSTA for us for a preliminary review, because there is a major traffic generator permit, an existing permit for 920, and we wanted to know exactly what the process would be. Due to the minor increase in the number of spaces and traffic generation at this point, they have indicated to us that the revised permit will be done via administrative decision process, and they sent us that paperwork, but that paperwork cannot be submitted until action by this, by this commission. As was mentioned, we're eliminating all the curb cuts and the pavement out front, putting in a large grass area, landscape, coming into the site at a point where it leaves enough stacking room at the, at the exit drive to enter at this point, enter to serve this building, deliveries around the back of this building, and additional parking over here. This unshaded portion of the parking lot, that presently existed... This unshaded portion of the parking lot, that presently existed at this time. So we're basically holding that edge of the parking lot, putting in our sidewalk and adding our proposed building, which is proposed to be six smaller units, 1,000 to 1,500 square feet, specialty-type retail shops. As you probably are familiar with, 920, they're extremely large spaces. And the applicant has recognized the need for some smaller users. This plan has been approved by Inland Wetlands. Part of that was snow storage. Our snow storage area is right here. We are outside the wetland buffer. The storm drainage system for this will incorporate some underground detention to alleviate any increase in post-development flows. It will tie into the existing drainage system for 920, which has an oil-water separator. Discharge is down gradient, and we will be making some repair work at the outfall, the existing outfall for the storm drainage system, which has been in place since the late '60s and has eroded slightly, and we'll be putting some riprap in there to correct that problem. And as, again, I said, that's been approved by Inland Wetlands. We are providing approximately a dozen spaces more than the minimum that are required. We do meet all the setbacks, landscaping. To address one of Casey's final comments, we will be incorporating into the final plan set the approved landscape plan for 920, which was approved by this commission back when the greenhouse was added. But the fact that it's two separate properties and this landscaping now is almost complete, we didn't want to co-mingle the landscaping. We have a separate landscaping plan for this site and a separate one for this. With regard to outside storage and display, we are proposing to use these 10 parking spaces in the rear of 920 for proposed seasonal outdoor storage, and this area around the face of the greenhouse for seasonal outdoor display area. We're proposing to put in a white paint line here, which is 24 feet from the existing parking, so that we maintain the 24-foot traffic aisle through there, and there'll actually be a delineation on the ground, as opposed to just saying, well, it's going to be so wide by so long. There will be cross easements with regard to the drainage. There will be cross easements. There's a common accessway delineated on the plans, which splits the property line on both sides, providing ingress and egress to both properties. And I believe that fairly sums it up. Certainly happy to answer any specific questions the commission may have.
Sure. If you could just address the, because we talked about, you know, modified, part of our motion here, if this were to be approved, it says modify property lines between 920 and 940 South Colony Road. If you could please explain that.
Okay. So when we needed to have a common accessway between the two properties, the existing property line for 920 is actually, if you were to extend the bottom of that green shaded area, it is right there. What we've done is we've taken that property line and moved it to the center line of the driveway.
Yeah, I guess I understand that, the 920. I guess I'm more interested in the 940.
940 is the property that is that landscape business.
Yep, exactly.
And several years back, 920 and 940 were merged.
Okay. All right. So now it's one property, now 920, 940?
It is one property.
I was a little confused with that, and now I understand. Okay. Thank you. Any other comments before I?
No, I think that's it. Other than, Mr. Chairman, I know that we did have some substantial discussion with Casey about the seasonal outdoor storage area on 920. And again, Dave did talk about that. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we have Casey's comments from her May 24th letter, item one, and there were some restrictions, such as 1D, and there was no certain objection to that being conditioned, should the commission deem it appropriate to approve the application.
Sure. Commission members with questions for the applicant. Casey, if you would, I know in your memo you had talked about that there were some violations on the property. Were those violations only related to the outdoor storage issue, or were there other violations? And, you know, had they been addressed, or do they currently exist?
There was the outdoor sales issue, and then there were some other items. There was some outdoor, there were some materials out there, and there were some vehicles out there, and those have all been cleaned up.
Those have all been corrected. Okay, good. If there's no questions at this time from, well, I guess before I go out to the public, Casey, do you have any comments on the application?
Yeah, just a couple. First of all, in your motion, I do believe that I put the wrong numbers in there, which is why there was some confusion, so where, or I had the numbers mixed up. So 920 is actually a reference to 902, and 940 is actually the reference to 920. So there are improvements being made on both sites. One thing that the commission will need to determine, which I put in my comments, is the seasonal outdoor storage area, or outdoor sales area. You don't allow outdoor sales in general. So you will have to determine whether you're comfortable allowing seasonal outdoor sales. It is not uncommon. It does happen other places. We have this conversation with Walmart every summer, because a lot of the places that sell plants want to be able to sell them outside. So I think that if you are inclined to determine that it's an accessory use to these retail facilities, then we need to be clear about what the parameters of those seasonal outdoor sales are, and those should be made a part of the conditions of approval. So for that, I would reference months of the year, area of display, and the type of items that can be displayed. So my suggestion would be that the only things that can be sold outdoors are items that are grown during that season. So I think that keeps it clear that we're not talking about general, people want to sell clothes or loaves of bread or whatever else outside. It's specific to the fact that this is a greenhouse, there is a greenhouse component, and there is a plant component, and typically, those are kept outdoors or displayed outdoors for sale. So that's one thing that you'll need to make a determination about. Just a couple of other things. I wanted to clarify what Mr. Carson, or make sure I understand. So 920 South Colony, that currently complies with our landscaping requirements for the parking areas, or it will be brought into compliance?
If it isn't already finished?
It will be.
It will comply with the June 13, 2016 plan that was part of the greenhouse approval, and we'll incorporate that sheet.
What I want to make sure is that it's going to comply with our current requirements. Because I think at that time, the determination was made that it was an existing condition, but we're making more changes on that site, so.
I guess I'm a little unclear as to, have your regulations changed since June 13 of 2016?
No, but as I just said, at that time, the determination, the argument was made that it was an existing site, and so that updates shouldn't have to be made to the site overall. But I think we're at the point of doing that. So I want, we never got those calculations. I want those calculations this time around.
Oh, calculations as to the amount of landscape?
Yeah, to make sure that it's correct.
Okay, I understand.
Okay. And then the only other things I have are, pretty much everything else was touched on. I also requested a, I guess I was particularly specific, a $9,317 SNE bond in my calculations, which can be reduced down to $5,600 once the outfall work is completed. And I also just wanted to make my last round of comments stated 5/24/2017, which Mr. Carson touched on, a condition of approval.
Good, thank you. And at this point in time, again, this is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on the application? If so, please come forward, state your name and address and your comments. Seeing none, I guess I will bring it back first to the applicant to see if he'd like to make any final comments before we close the public hearing.
We were hoping to have the bond reduced by a couple dollars, but the $9,317 is acceptable as a charge.
I was going to ask her to round it up.
And we're fine, thank you.
You're fine with that? Okay, I think from a commission's standpoint, before we, well, first of all, are there any specific questions commission members have? And if they're not, then I think we need to make a decision or have some comments as far as the outdoor sales and what people feel about outdoor sales. So I'd entertain any comments, suggestions from commission members concerning the request for outdoor sales. Yes, Mrs. Morgenstein?
So I guess as a general rule, do we have any guidelines, or we're making them as we go here?
You don't allow, as a primary use or a primary component of a use, you don't allow outdoor sales. Sales have to be, retail has to be inside a building. So the only way that you would be, that it could potentially be allowed in this circumstance is as an accessory use to that existing primary sort of plant sales, produce sales. So you would have to decide what those restrictions would be.
Do we currently have any definition of seasons?
No. When we do, for outdoor dining, it's been touched on sometimes, where we've talked about seasonal outdoor dining, or it's sort of been discussed, but there's never been a formal definition provided. We did talk about it for the parking, about seasonal outdoor dining for the parking in the CA6 zone, and I believe we determined that to be May through September. So, you know, I think it should be something, if you are inclined to go in that direction, I think it should be something that's consistent with the growing season. So the whole reason behind potentially being allowed to sell these items outdoors at all is that they're being produced during that season.
Yeah, well, I guess that was part of my question. As I think of a fairly large store providing grown products, I could foresee, okay, there's what comes out of the greenhouse for this nice time of year, but then there's things like Christmas trees, and there's things like stocks of autumn things. So, yeah, it sounds like you're inclined, and we should discuss, is it what comes out of their own greenhouse?
Yeah, I mean, there is certainly potential for a slippery slope here, which is why, if you are, I mean, originally, when this was approved and the greenhouse was approved, we had this conversation. Like, we asked this question, and the answer was no, it was okay. So it's really up to you. I mean, to some degree, I think there is a reasonable argument for some seasonal outdoor sales, but I think it needs to be very restricted, and I think it needs to be very clear. And yeah, I think it needs to be clear what the product can be.
Ms. Fitzsimmons?
Just to clarify, and I think this is not what we had, you know, happen years ago, where every gas station was selling mulch during the season. This is a product of this operation. So you were kind enough to mention Walmart, Home Depot, and Lowe's, which all right now are hosting outdoors parking lot sales, taking up very valuable parking. This is not the case. So I could be in favor of it, and I, you know, seasonal, and I think you're right, but unfortunately, the season does go through the end of the year, because right, you know, Christmas trees, I assume they're going to sell trees, you really only lose two or three months, you know, the winter, the dead of winter, people aren't doing, but I think, you know, from spring till December, there'd be potential for outdoor sales, everything, you know, the holiday stuff. I think because it's shown in the plans, has shown on the plans, I would be okay, because it's consistent with the merchandise available inside. That's where I'm rationalizing this. It's not like a gas station saying, I'm going to sell mulch during the season, or I want to sell pumpkins in season. The primary product is gas. This market would, does have a greenhouse, and they want to be able to put things outside the greenhouse. I think the amount shown on the plan would be consistent, and that's what the applicant's proposing. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's what I'd like to see, because it's not a massive area. It's right next to the building, but I would like to say, you know, in the dead of winter, we don't expect to see things outside, you know. Frankly, January through end of March would probably be just the three, you know, the first quarter would be the only season. I don't know, and I don't know if that makes sense.
I also think that the greenhouse at that point is empty with the flowers, so if they were putting pumpkins or Christmas trees, et cetera, they'd go inside there. So I agree 100% what you think.
Yeah, they're in the greenhouse.
I wouldn't want to limit Christmas tree sales, quite frankly, but obviously then, you know, January, you know, my wife's not going outdoor shopping, so. So I don't know if that makes sense. Based upon the plan, that.
It's a pretty limited size of space.
But it's specific, so I like the fact that it's not an open question. And then, Casey, I think you had questioned, it says, "Sold outdoor seasonal items only." I mean, that's, Christmas trees are a season, flowers are a season, pumpkins and hay bales are a season. So I don't, you want the word "season" in the motion? Is that what you're suggesting? I mean.
Well, I think it should be clear what can be sold out there. So to your point, it has to be accessory to what they're already doing, and to me, I was thinking of that as another way to clarify that that's sort of, so whatever's going on in the greenhouse is kind of being allowed outside, too, because that's what they're already doing, to make it accessory, as opposed to like the gas station situation or another situation like that. And the other thing, the other two comments that I would make that we had talked about is marking out that, having them stripe out that area or mark out that area so that it's very, very clear, because I've been a little bit worried about people backing up into the plants. But I think if it's clearly marked, we should be all right. There is the 420-foot-wide drive aisle there. And the other just comment I would make is I did ask Mr. Carson to include this area in the parking calculations, similar to how we address outdoor dining, so that it's not, so that that issue is still accounted for.
Anyone else? I guess I just make my comment. I certainly agree with Mr. Fitzsimmons as far as just the, you know, proposed outdoor sales area. It's, you know, you're not taking up parking spaces, you're not doing that. You have a very, you know, very well-defined area where you're proposing to have the outdoor sales. And again, it doesn't prevent or restrict any of your parking. So clearly, I would be in favor of that. And as far as what can, you know, what can be sold there, I'm certainly waiting to see how creative Mr. Fitzsimmons can be. So with that, again, any final comments you may have, Casey, before we close the public hearing?
As conditions of approval, I just also wanted to include water and sewer comments, the required outfall repairs, the filing of the appropriate easements, cross easements, and maintenance agreements, and that's all.
Good. Thank you. If there's any further comments from the applicant and no further comments from any commission members, at this point in time, I'd entertain a motion to close our public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons. All in favor?
Aye.
Repose abstentions. Moving on, I'd entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I move the commission to approve a special permit, retail residential traffic generator for 902 Colony Realty LLC to A, change from one non-conforming use to another by demolishing the existing two-family house and building two additional apartments over the existing building at the front of 902 South Colony Road. over the existing building at the front of 902 South Colony Road. B., construct a 9,750-square-foot retail building and associated site improvements on the property at 902 South Colony Road. C., modify the property lines between 902 and 940 South Colony Road, 920, sorry, 920, excuse me. 902 and 920 South Colony Road. D., modify the approved site plan for 920 South Colony Road in order to create the new proposed parking configuration associated with a lot line revision and new building at 920 South Colony Road. E., approve and allow certain changes that were made on the property at 920 South Colony Road that were not approved and were raised during the course of this application, outdoor storage areas and seasonal outdoor sales. And F., repair the outfall into Wharton Brook at 920 South Colony Road, has shown plans entitled Site Plan, Site Development Plans for Property of 902 Colony Realty LLC, 900-902 South Colony Road, Connecticut Route 5, Wallingford, Connecticut, dated February 13, 2017, revised through... This says May 16. What we get tonight says 6/5. Can I use a 6/5 date?
I've incorporated some of your comments.
Okay, so yeah, I would say use both dates.
Okay, there you go. Revised through May 16, 2017, as well as June 5, 2017, subject to the following conditions. Number one, comments of the town of Wallingford Water and Sewer Senior Engineer dated April 26, 2017. Number two, comments of the town of Wallingford Environmental Planner dated April 26, 2017. Number three, comments of the town of Wallingford Town Engineer dated 4/27, 17. Number four, prior change of use approval for 920 South Colony Road for a restaurant is deemed null and void as a result of the approval of this application. Number five, comments of the town of Wallingford Town Planner dated 4/28, 17, and 5/24, 17, include the posting of S and E bond to the amount of $9,317. Number six, approval of limited outdoor sales allowed has areas in shown plans dated 6/5, 17. Number seven, area of outdoor sales must be marked, striped, and further delineated for visibility for patrons. Number eight, outdoor sale items must be consistent with items generally available inside the greenhouse and associated retail complex. Number nine, applicant represents for filing of all appropriate cross easements has discussed and outlined in the presentation. Landscape calculations, I'm sorry. And number 11, final plans to depict landscape calculations for the entire site as requested by the town planner.
We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen, voting beginning with Mrs. Morgenstein.
Yes.
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 And yes, application's been approved. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brings us to our next order of business. It's a continuation of a special permit retail office to retail residential Dina Tally Realty at 816 East Center Street. Again, Mr. Madarasa, if you'd note all additional correspondence.
Casey, there's no new correspondence, is that correct?
Yes, there is an approved, a new plan, that's all.
We have a plan, okay. So if you'd just note the plan. This is, here you go.
Mr. Chairman, we have a plan received June 2, 2017.
Thank you. And if the applicant would please, and his representative, please introduce himself and begin their presentation. I will just make one comment. I did not attend the last month's meeting, the May meeting, but I did review the minutes, so I feel comfortable at this point in time, you know, voting on the application. So with that, again, if you gentlemen, please introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Vincenzo Dina Tally, a Taylor Lane in Wallingford. I'm here with Norm Boldick of Land Resource Consultants. As you may recall, this application involves the property 816 East Center Street, commonly known as East Side Market. It's actually a multi-tenant building where there, it's occupied by East Side Market, and there's a second-story office space that exists in this building. And we are converting that office space to a residential unit. And just the way it's written in the regulations, it triggers a special permit, and as you may recall, the last meeting, we opened the special permit process for this application. And so this was an opportunity to take a look at the site and make some improvements. We've had a productive meeting with Casey since the last meeting, looking at some of the items that came up for discussion, including some additional landscaping. There was conversation about handicapped parking spaces. So on this plan that you have before you, there have been, there has been additional landscaping provided. And we also took a close look at the handicapped spaces, and we found locations that they could be functional with the property. There were some grade issues on the site. It's a really tight site, so the first thought would maybe put it right in front of the door at East Side Market, but because of the grade and the slope that exists there, we moved it closer to the side, near the ramp at the end of the sidewalk. But I think we've managed to address all the comments with this plan that you have before you.
Thank you, Mr. Dina Tally. Commission members with questions for the applicant? Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, could you just go over the landscaping improvements on the plan?
Okay. Currently, the site is entirely paved, so we're adding two areas. There's one that is on the west corner, southwest corner. So if you could envision coming out of East Side Market and then taking it right outside the door on that face of the building, we've provided landscaping. And then also, in the center of the building, there's a landscape that's provided. And there's additional landscaping in the area of the existing dumpster enclosures.
And, you know, what did you propose to have in those areas?
He did the, go ahead if you want to, the plantings that you did.
There's some, seven azaleas, and then there's some Norway spruce at the front corner of the building. In the very front of the building, there is a small striped area that we were proposing a maple tree. And then around the dumpster area in the back as a screening, there's arborvitae's. That's pretty much the extent of the landscaping.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Other commission members? On the, just so I'm clear, on the parking, there's, there's one handicapped accessible space, is that correct? That's, or two?
There are three, actually.
Okay, could you, I see one. Could you point the other ones out to me, please?
So...
Oh, I see them. The ones that are, the ones that are currently there, correct?
Yes.
On the, and then on the side of the building, there were three spaces, but now there's going to be only two spaces, is that correct? On the, I guess it would be the east side of the building?
The, those, those would remain, there's two spaces that would remain there, the parallel parking. There's three, actually.
Yeah, there's three there. So you're, so you're eliminating, so you're eliminating one of those three spaces, correct? So you only, you're showing there's only two spaces there now.
Oh, no, just the way he numbered, there's two spaces there, and then there's, and if you look at the back, there's, he's counted the six spaces in the rear. So there's two parallel spaces butting the side of the building.
Yep.
And there's additional six spaces in the rear.
Okay. All right. And any chance of screening the dumpster from the front? I know that that may not be possible because it may impact that back parking space, but is there a chance to do some kind of screening on that dumpster? I know you're, you know, you're putting screening in the back of the dumpster, but...
Like a fence enclosure?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you could do something like that.
That's fine.
And as far as just, you know, just improving the parking lot, one of these days, someone's going to lose their car in those big holes in the, in the back parking.
Yeah, this was good time.
That'll all be taken back.
We were, we were looking to the improvements, and then when we looked at changed use, now we're able to look at the entire, so our goal is to repave this.
That whole lot?
Or the whole lot, the entire lot before the season ends.
Okay. Yes, Mrs. Morgenstein?
Yeah, I have one more landscaping question. So the, as you say, it's really all pavement at this point. Between snow removal and the East Center Street Road itself, does that front left corner have no room for some planters or something that gives us something green rather than concrete at that corner of East Main Street and East Center Street?
We did look at that, and just because the unusual configuration of the site, that's within the state right-of-way, and they wouldn't allow...
So that's not your...
And so that's why we put it along the side of the building and the front.
It's really unfortunate.
Casey, I see you're eager to comment. Do you have any comments or on the application?
Yeah, the only thing that I still have some, I guess, disagreement with the applicant on, and maybe I'm just being obtuse, but I don't really understand why the parking spaces themselves can take advan, they rely on the part, portion of the right-of-way to be driven on in order for those spaces to work, but the landscaping doesn't seem able to do that. So, I mean, it's particularly apparent on the one over on the west side of the building where the space actually extends further out than the landscaping island. But it's also apparent on that little triangle in the middle. It just seems like we could have a little more than we do.
It's an extremely tight site, and, you know, this, this, our goal is that this business will continue to be a productive site. It's not an ideal situation for a retail business to be in this tight of a configuration. And I think we've gone long strides here to make the parking continue and to add some landscaping, so we're, we're, these are hatched areas here now that we're replacing with landscaping. It's going to be a little tighter now for these guys, and we just don't want to risk too many changes that could negatively impact this business.
Sure.
The site.
Hey, Casey, if you could just, you know, your comment about, just so I can understand where you would feel that there could be additional landscaping, that's...
I would extend both of those landscaped islands further out, all the way out to the end of the parking spaces. If the parking spaces can extend out that far, I don't see any reason that the landscaping islands can't. So the triangular one in front of the building doesn't extend out as far as the parking spaces. It gets cross-hatched halfway down. And I'm not really clear, like I said, if the parking spaces can extend down that far, then I don't see any reason that the landscaping can't. And the same thing over on the west side of the building. I don't see, I think it's odd we don't, and very unusual to see that the landscaping island doesn't extend down to the level of the bottom of the parking spaces. And I know this is a tight site, but the aisle gets much, much narrower towards the other ends of the building, and we still have parking spaces there. So, I mean, if, if the state were to come in and take their whole right-of-way back, this whole site would be, this, both of these parking areas would be completely unusable anyhow. So if the parking spaces are dependent on that, I don't see why the landscaping can't be. I also think that there's this cross-hatched area just to the, so there's the row of parking spaces to the west of the building, and just at the bottom of those, there's a cross-hatched area that's labeled as pedestrian access. There's already a sidewalk adjacent to the building, so I, in some ways, I'd prefer to see that become green, too.
Which one? I'm not sure on that one.
Where it says, where it says proposed, proposed strip pedestrian access?
Yeah, not the big one off the, off the corner there, but the one on the west side of the building. Because I think people will use the big one off the corner there.
I got you.
If I may comment on...
Absolutely.
So there's, there's two primary areas. There's, there's, well, let me start, there's three primary areas here. If you're facing the East Side Market, to the far right, we have it hatched for the obvious because of the handicaps parking, just to clarify that.
Yep.
In the center, I think we can extend it as you suggested in that triangle, the lower part of the triangle. And then if you're facing the building to the left, I think if you look at some of the dimensions there, it gets a little bit tight in that turning radius, and it would be more difficult. And I think we've provided enough of an area where that you could have hardy growth, a hardy landscaping buffer that can grow in that section. And then if you continue further towards the back, we have a hatched area because we just thought it was logical when there's a series of cars that allow for easier pedestrian to encourage them to separate them from the landscaped area. So I feel like we've come a long way on a really tight site, and we can, we can definitely look at that triangle on the front, but that car, that turning, that corner there would get trickier with the turning radius. No, no, no. Well, that's, that's, that's where he's, that's where he's talking about. No, this, the landscaping is just there.
Other commission members with any comments as far as the landscaping, what they're thinking about? Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Just to, we're trying to figure this out. The area that we have the circles for the trees?
Yes.
Are they planted or planters?
No, planted.
In the ground?
So we would, you could pave the entire site, and then you'll saw cut the asphalt.
Gotcha.
And pick up the subgrade, and it would be a flower, a flower bed with some low growth and medium growth. And on that side, actually, we can have higher growth.
Right.
Because there's no storefront glass. And in the front, we would have to, we'd do the same thing. We're going to pave it, cut it, establish a green area, and then do something that would have a higher growth that would, and you see that in front of New Street Mall's where it would complement the building without taking away.
So just to be clear, so it's a landscaped island?
Yes.
Forgive me, and I, just looking at the ground, and then under, on the ground cover, would it be mulch or grass? Or is that, it's not clear to me?
Either way, it'd be, it'd be a grassy area, it'd be, it could be mulch or grass. But it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a asphalt, like I think what you're saying, it's not flower pots on top of the asphalt.
That's, yeah, okay, that's the first thing, yeah. So I'm clear there, it's in the ground, but it's, but the ground cover would be of natural, whether it be grass or mulch.
Yeah, likely be grass.
It would not be crushed down?
No.
Okay.
What is this?
Yeah, and then the other, so the hash marks, which aren't labeled, is that ground cover? That's what's causing confusion up here because it's not green, so...
Yeah, you know what?
I want to make sure I understand that.
The hash mark extension near the grass area, under the, you're looking, if you're facing the East Side Market to the left?
Yes, left of the front door.
His hash marks extend underneath the landscaping, which is probably causing some confusion.
Easily confused.
That's later shade, it's existing. That's why it's, so it should have been drawn out of there.
I could park there today.
Exactly.
So the parking spot's gone, and it will be, it will be a landscaped island?
Correct.
The whole, so the hash mark is the landscape island? That's what I'm trying to be clear, I apologize.
There's two shades. Hash mark, which, okay, so there's, there's a darker one.
Mr. Dina, I know that, perhaps it might be helpful if you could, well, we sometimes discourage, if you could just come up here and show everybody on your plans, because I think there's a bit of confusion.
Can I also provide you with a suggestion?
Absolutely.
That's, that's okay, that's the green area. That's the hash marked, known park, so you can return to raid.
That's pavement.
That's pavement.
There you go.
So these are hash marks, these are hash marks. Yeah, we, we understand that, it's just that on the hash marks, you had some dark hash marks and light hash marks, and...
Yeah. That's the difference, you got that?
Thank you.
Is everyone, is everyone clear with that?
Mr. Chairman, and just when you're looking at that, realize that as you exit East Side Market, the sidewalk has the ramps. And then there's a forward, if you go forward, there's a step. So the, the ramps would go straight out. So the landscaping, we would, ideally would not extend in the, in way of those ramps.
Any comments from, Mr. Fitzsimmons, I know you're dying to make a comment.
No.
No. No. All right. Again, there's no other commission members making, would like to make a comment at this time. If, this is, again, this is a public hearing. Any members of the public who would like to comment on the application, please come forward, name an address. Seeing none, I will bring it back to the applicant to make any final comments that he would like to make. Don't feel compelled to make any. If you have none...
No, and, you know, that, that one little area, just, if you, you know, many of you frequent probably that shop there is, sidewalk ramps off to the sides and it steps off the front because the grade that they're stuck with, the street's lower, it's an existing building. And so that's the natural flow for the pedestrian.
Sure. Any other commission members like to make any comments?
Yeah, thank you. I just, I'm, I'm having a, a, just, and I'm not, I'm not thick, I guess, but I'm just having a tough time with it. So based upon your visit here, those areas are the grass, where I use my green highlighter. Is that accurate?
Yeah.
All right. Because there's a lot of hash marks, but like there's no grass between the road and the parking spots right now because people can come in there, that's the state right-of-way. That's, and again, I, I've done it. That's where I go, sometimes go. Okay, so it's light on grass. It's light on greenery. I, I, I appreciate what the town planner's saying. I use it. I drive by it. I, I, and I, the grading is tough there. We need, we need something more in the landscape. I just don't know what, what can be done because nothing else is objectional. But, but I, I understand where, I, I see where Casey's coming from. Is there a chance, if you can come back to the team, to extend the, the island, to make the island larger, but not, not on the curve? Maybe that's the issue.
If you could, I, I think when, maybe Mr., I don't want to speak to you, Mr. Fitzsimmons, but the, I guess this would be the, the southern part of the island, right on the front of the building. If you can just extend that, extend that out without, without, in beating your, or, or...
The corner.
The, the corner here. So you're, so you're bringing that straight out to the, to the west. And then your, the island will end on the, on the western side, right at where the crosshatching is for, just where that crosshatching is for the proposed, you know, pedestrian access. So you're still going to be able to maintain that curve. You'll have the curve, but you're gonna bring the landscaping out a little bit more to the, to the west.
And we've, so, and, and that's, that's agreeable to me. And I think we would do is probably keep the higher shrubbery closer to the building to protect it.
Yeah, and a lower shrub, sure.
For sightline and in the event that someone, you know, hit that edge there.
Okay. Does that work for commission members? All right. At this point in time, again, there was no comments from the public. I believe the applicant's completed his comments. Seeing that there's no additional comments from commission members, at this point in time, I entertain a motion to close the, to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, move to close the public hearing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions. And at this point in time, I entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I move the commission to approve a special permit residential use on upper floor for Dina Tally Realty to allow the second floor office use to be converted to one three-bedroom residential unit and to maintain the first story has retail use and to approve site modifications that have been made since a previous site plan approval and make associated site changes at 816 East Center Street as shown in plans entitled Property Survey Land of Dina Tally Realty LLC, 816 East Center Street, Wallingford, Connecticut, dated March 31st, 2017, updated to 5/5/17. Subject to the following conditions. Number one, comments of the town of Wallingford Water and Sewer Senior Engineer dated April 25th, 2017. Number two, screening of the dumpster to be provided has agreed to and depicted in the plans and discussed at this meeting. Number three, modification and expansion of landscaped island has discussed and agreed at this meeting on the western portion of the parking lot. Oh, I'm sorry. And number four, extension of the triangle-shaped landscape on the front of the, on the East Center Street side of the property has discussed and agreed this evening. I got the dumpster screen.
Thank you. We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen, voting beginning with Mrs. Morgenstein.
Yes.
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 And yes, application's been approved. Have a good evening.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Brings our, next item on our agenda is this, agenda is a special permit extension of pharmacy within hospital facility, Gaylord Hospital slash 50 Gaylord Farm Road. Again, if the applicant would please come forward to begin his presentation. And Mr. Madarazzo, if you please note all correspondence for the record.
Mr. Chairman, we have a legal notice, number 406-17, special permit private hospital for Gaylord Hospital to construct an 800-square-foot expansion of the existing pharmacy within the facility at 50 Gaylord Farm Road. We have a application, 406-17-17, I believe it's a revised application, received June 7th, 2017. This is signed by the fire marshal. Inter-office memorandum to Casey Costello Town Planner from Eric Kruger Senior Engineer, received June 5th, 2017. Departmental referral application, 406-17-17, received May 12th, 2017, signed by the fire marshal. A letter dated May 19th, 2017, to Gaylord Hospital Inc. from Casey Costello Town Planner. A letter from Giuliano Associates to Casey Costello Town Planner, received June 2nd, 2017. A letter from Giuliano Associates to Casey Costello Town Planner, received June 2nd, 2017. Also attached, some plans. And we have a revised set of plans dated May 19th, 2017. Sorry, I think that's the wrong one.
I think that's the wrong one, isn't it?
Yep. I think that's it.
Oh yeah, I think that's it.
Yep.
Good. Now, thank you. And again, if the applicant's representative, please introduce himself, begin his presentation.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Christopher Giuliano. I'm licensed land surveyor and professional engineer with the firm Giuliano Associates. We maintain office at 405 Main Street in the ASL section of town. I'm actually gonna start with sheet two of two, which gives you the overall view, and then I'll dive into the actual site plan. But this is just to kind of show you where this proposed pharmacy addition is going. I know you're all familiar with the Gaylord Hospital site, but as you come up from Parker Farms Road, you round the turn where the big rock is in the field. Gaylord's main entrance, main entrance is here. And the small little addition is being kind of put in this little courtyard here. And this, this part right here is what's known as the Hooker Building. So what has happened is that the state has mandated certain changes be made to all pharmacies and all hospitals throughout the state of Connecticut, and Gaylord is no exception. So what they needed to do is they needed to make certain adjustments to how they handle the drugs, how they store the drugs. They needed clean rooms. So instead of trying to retrofit their existing pharmacy that's in the hospital already, which is located in this section of the existing Hooker Building, they found that it would be easier to put this 20 by 37-foot, 4-inch addition onto the building. And basically, they're going to access it through an existing block, bricked-up doorway. So the only access into this new facility is through the actual hospital. As I said, there, there's a number of clean rooms, drug storage, drug storage rooms, and you were provided a architectural footprint to show you how everything is being laid out. As part of the overall site plan, both on the team's internal review and some of the comments from Casey, we've made a few minor changes to this area of the site as well. First and foremost, we are going to legalize the parking that is just to the east of the site. Currently, there's two standard handicap spots and three handicap, two standard spots, three handicap spots. However, the handicap spots are not compliant with ADA regulations because they're not the right width. They don't have the striped island. We are also going to be removing the two pharmacy parking spots that are located just to the north of the addition. And that is due to the fact that this building, this small addition is being put in. These parking spaces become very tight and almost nonusable. So we are going to just use this little driveway area as a loading, an unloading zone because we do have access into the Hooker Building right here. What that also allows us to do is provide some landscaping back from the small green area that we're taking away. And then as far as utility hookups, water is coming from inside the building. And we have one small sink on the inside of the building, and we're gonna run a new sanitary lateral to the manhole that's located just to the east of the proposed addition. Other than that, Casey made a number of comments which we addressed back on June 2nd. I believe that they were all satisfactory, our answers. And then the fire marshal, I noticed, had no particular comments. And just recently, I got to see the comments from the senior engineer, Water and Sewer, and they have already gone out and looked for cross-connections. I believe that was done on Friday. So I think we're all set as far as staff comments go. So I'm just gonna turn it back over to the commission. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any commission members with questions for the applicant? Seeing none. Casey, comments that you may or may not have on the application?
All of my comments are addressed.
Good. Okay. Again, this is a, this is a public hearing. Any members of the public who would like to speak on the application, please come forward, name an address in your comments. Seeing none, just bring it back to you, Mr. Giuliano, if you had any final comments you'd like to make.
I'm all set. If you're all set.
Any commission members, any final comments before I request a motion to close the public hearing? Seeing none, I'll request a motion to close our public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I move to close the public hearing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions. Now, at this particular time, I'd entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve a special permit hospital for Gaylord Hospital to expand the existing pharmacy facility and make minor associated site changes at 50 Gaylord Farm Road, Gaylord Hospital, as shown in plans entitled Improvement Location Survey, Proposed Pharmacy Expansion, Land of Gaylord Hospital, 50 Gaylord Farm Road, Wallingford, Connecticut, dated 4/21/17, updated to 5/30/17. Subject to the following conditions. Number one, comments of the town of Wallingford Fire Marshal dated 6/6/17. And number two, comments of the town of Wallingford Water and Sewer Senior Engineer dated 6/2/17. That's all.
Do we have a motion on the application? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen, voting beginning with Mrs. Morgenstein.
Yes.
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 And yes, application's been approved. Have a good evening. Brings, before we get to our next item, Casey, I just want to confirm on items number six and seven. You've received a letter from the applicant agreeing to the...
I have a verbal agreement from Mr. Giuliano, who is their representative. So maybe you wanted to state it on the record before he walks away?
Yeah, or else before you leave, if you'd scribble it down on a piece of paper.
I, I will take care of it. I will get written notification. I, I don't know if Casey informed you, but due to an unforeseen circumstance...
Yeah, she's, she's informed us.
Okay.
So if you would just please state it for the record, then you can give her the...
Okay. For the record, we ask that the matter be tabled due to an untimely death of Mr. Jeremiah's father. So we will get a letter to Casey asking, or formally asking for the application to be tabled until next month.
Good enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that brings us to our next item, old business. It's a subdivision, five lots for P. Dina Tally at 605 North Elm Street. Again, if the applicant and/or his representative, please come forward, begin preparing for the presentation. And Mr. Madarazzo, if you please note all correspondence for the record.
Mr. Chairman, we have a memorandum to Casey Costello Town Planner from Aaron O'Hare Environmental Planner dated May 5th, 2017. We have a memorandum to Casey Costello Town Planner from Aaron O'Hare Environmental Planner dated May 5th, 2017. A engineering summer report received on, submitted January 16th, 2017, revised May 1st, 2017. A memorandum to Planning and Zoning Commission, Mr. James Seiter, Chairman, from Rob Baltromatis. I don't know why. I just can't get that one. Dated April 27th, 2017. Sorry, sorry, Rob, if you're listening. A letter from LRC Group to Casey Costello Town Planner dated April 11th, 2017. A memorandum to Casey Costello Town Planner from Aaron O'Hare Environmental Planner dated April 26th, 2017. Memo to Mr. James Vitelli, Chairman, Inland Wetlands Commission from Department of Engineering dated April 26th, 2017. Application 101-17 dated March 13th, 2017, signed by the environmental planner. Application 101-17 dated March 13th, 2017, signed by the fire marshal. A letter dated March 24th, 2017, to Pasquale Dina Tally, signed by Casey Costello Town Planner. A letter, LRC Group, dated May 4th, 2017, to Casey Costello Town Planner. A letter from LRC Group dated June 1st, 2017, to Casey Costello Town Planner. A letter dated May 25th, 2017, to Pasquale Dina Tally, from Casey Costello Town Planner. Application 101-17 dated March 13th, 2017, signed by fire marshal. Application 101-17 dated March 13th, 2017, again, signed by the fire marshal. Inter-office memorandum to Casey Costello Town Planner from Eric Kruger Senior Engineer dated May 31st, 2017. A letter to Norman D. Boldick LS dated May 9th, 2017, from Justin J. Rosetti, building official. A letter dated May 22nd, 2017, to Michael Jeremiah, referencing the site plan 215-17. Set of plans, like revised, dated May 19th, 2017.
Thank you, Mr. Madarazzo. If the applicant's representative, please introduce himself and begin his presentation, please.
Good evening. My name's Norm Bolduk from LRC Group, 160 West Street, Cromwell, Connecticut, here representing Pat Dina Tally in a five-lot subdivision located at 605 North Elm Street. The property's a 10.3-acre parcel on the east side of North Elm Street and on the west side of Briarwood Lane. Has an existing, one existing residence and driveways, and then there's a number of outbuildings. There's a 0.9-acre pond that currently doesn't have any outlet. We did go before your wetlands commission. We are proposing to create an outlet because currently, as the pond exists, as it fills up, it just spills over into the lot. There was a hand-dug channel that comes out to North Elm Street, and as the pond fills up, it just spills out over that and runs overland to North Elm Street. So we're proposing to put an outlet structure on the pond and pipe it around the proposed lots and tie it into the North Elm Street drainage system. So that's the extent of the wetlands. There's also a small chunk of wetlands here in the northeast corner. The property is located in the R18 zone, and we are proposing five lots on the 10 acres. The lots range, there's three lots that range from .42 acres to .3 acres, which are just over the 18,000 square foot minimum. And then there's two lots that are 3.1 acres and 5.8 acres. And then, there's two lots that are 3.1 acres and 5.8 acres. Before the subdivision is constructed, the existing buildings are to be raised, and so are the existing bituminous driveway. The proposed development will create five lots, being three frontage lots on North Elm Street, one rear lot that's going to come off of North Elm Street, and then, there's an existing 25-foot strip of land that comes off of Briarwood Lane that's going to be accessed for the fifth lot. All lots are going to be serviced by Town Water and Sewer. We've been working with your staff to provide utility services for these. We did receive some comments from your Water and Sewer Division. For certain lots, they wanted us to access off of Briarwood Lane because of pressure. All those lots will have all-town utilities. The proposed drainage system that's going to be provided for the pond, there will be an outlet structure created just outside the wetlands. It's going to run across lot, the proposed Lot 4, down, and then down along this driveway, and then come across the frontage of these lots and tie into the existing drainage system. It was designed for a zero increase in peak runoff, and we've been working with your town engineer, and we have made some modifications to address his concerns. We also provided, all this line here is oversized to provide some additional storage and act as an underdrain because the three lots that access off of North Elm Street, it's quite a substantial grade that goes from North Elm Street up to, up to this existing residence. So, all these lots are going to be basically at grade from the road, and then, they're going to go in underneath basement access for the garages and then come out in the back at first-floor level. So, the rear of the buildings will be utilized as retaining walls. And then, there's about 50 feet of lawn area, and then, there's a three-to-one slope across the backs to get back up to this peak up in here. So, there was a lot of concern with the drainage and the amount of material that was going to be taken out of here. We think that we've addressed all the concerns of both your planning staff, engineering staff, and your utility divisions. If you have any specific questions, I'd be happy to ask, answer.
Commission members with questions for the applicant? Mr. Cohen?
Just, just one question. The, the properties on North Elm, they're going to exit to North Elm in the back from that single driveway? They're not going to have individual driveways?
Which ones? These right here?
Yeah.
These are all individual driveways for these three lots.
Okay.
This is the driveway for the, the rear lot in the back, the larger lot. And then, this will be the access off of Briarwood Lane for this particular lot. And all of them are designed to meet your town standards for driveways.
Thank you.
Other commission members? As far as the, you mentioned with the drainage issues and with the pond and the overflow and all of that, that is going to be done. When will that be done? Is that going to be one of the first things that would be done before you start?
There was some concern by the planning staff when that was going to be done. Originally, the...
If you could please just bring the microphone a little closer to you so they can pick it up. Thank you.
Originally, the developer was not going to do anything with these lots because he was saving them for his grandchildren. Because of some of the concern with when this was going to get done and if these were sold individually, how difficult the grading would be, as brought up by the planning staff, he's agreed to do that right away.
Okay.
If I may?
Sure, absolutely. If you'd just please introduce yourself, sir.
Pat D. Natale, 16 Fairway Drive. We're kind of going to work from back to front, only because I'm going to live in the house in the rear, and I need to get that kind of completed. But, we're going to start in the back, tear down the existing structures, remove the material from the front. The site should be completed by the end of this year, if not completed, front to back, if not early spring. But, I'd like to get it completed this year.
Okay. Casey, any comments that you may have?
Just quickly, yeah, just to clarify on that matter, I just wanted to make sure that since the front lots are part of the design of the overall subdivision, that it's clear that they're included in, so when the subdivision's completed, that means all the lot work on all the lots will be completed. Obviously, the houses may not be built, and Mr. Bolduc and Mr. D. Natale have gone through several iterations and worked with us a lot to sort of make these sites work. So, I think we're in good shape. I know they made a lot of changes for wetlands. And the only other thing that I am asking for is a $10,000 sedimentation and erosion control bond for the entire site, and that can be reduced as you...
Is that plus the $1,000 that I already posted, or?
That's minus that.
Okay, so...
So, $9,000.
Okay, so you need $9,000 more.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Again, any other commission members? This is not a public hearing, but we always do give members of the public an opportunity to comment on any of our applications. So, if there's any members of the public who'd like to, like to comment on the application, please come forward, name and address and any comments you may have. Seeing none, I guess I just bring it back to the applicant, any final comments that you may have before I ask the commission for... Okay. If there's no more comments that commission members may have, if we're kind of all... Yes, Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Just one question through you, Mr. Chairman, to the town planner. So, the idea of the phasing plan, phase one, future phasing plan, and the bonding, so is that, does that require to be called out in the motion, or it's agreed to on the record? I, I wasn't sure what verbiage you're looking for.
I, I did look at the statute too. So, as long as we're approving all of this as part of this subdivision, the alternative would have been take the three lots in the front out and design the two to sort of exist independently. Since they didn't do that and we're approving it this way, all of it becomes part of this subdivision. So, the normal motion is fine.
One bond covers the entire?
Yeah, and that way, we have the bond in place. So, if we ran into issues...
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. At this point in time, then, if there's no more comments from commission members, I'd entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I move we, the commission approve a subdivision, five lots for D. Natale at 605 North Elm Street. As shown on plans entitled Proposed Residential Subdivision Development, 605 North Elm Street, Wallingford, Connecticut, dated December 30th, 2016, updated to May 18th, 2017, subject to the following conditions. Number one, comments of the town of Wallingford Town Engineer dated 4/27/17. Comments of the town of Wallingford Water and Sewer Senior Engineer dated 3/24 and 5/31/17. And number four, posting of a $10,000 S and E bond has required and recommended by the town of Wallingford Town Planner.
We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen, voting beginning with Mrs. Morgenstein.
Yes.
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 And yes, application's been approved. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Brings us to our next item. It's a site plan tire repair sales for R. Mangino at 136 Dudley Avenue. Again, if the applicant would please come forward to begin preparing for his presentation. And Mr. Madarazzo, if you please note all correspondence for the record.
Mr. Chairman, I have a letter dated May 23rd, 2017, to Robert Mangino, architect, referencing site plan 216-17. Actually, also attached it as a site plan. I have a checklist referencing 216-17. No date that I can see. Inter-office departmental referral, application 216-17, dated May 8th, 2017, signed by the fire marshal. Inter-office memorandum to Casey Costello Town Planner from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, dated June 2nd, 2017. And that's all that I have.
Thank you, Mr. Madarazzo. If the applicant, please introduce himself and begin his presentation.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Absolutely.
Okay. For the record, my name is Robert Mangino, I'm an architect in Guilford, Connecticut, licensed state of Connecticut. I'm representing the owner and property known as Tri-State Tire. Quick photographs, if you're familiar with the property, 136 Dudley Avenue. I was contacted by the owner a few months ago. It was an existing foundation, wanted to rebuild it, provide storage for his tire facility. After I met the owner, met with staff, and found out that in 1983, original site plan was approved with variances, et cetera. After I talked to staff, found out that since time has elapsed, new zoning regulations occurred, found we had to make a new application for site plan approval. After meeting with staff, it was determined that we needed basically need to survey the upgrade and make sure that the building was constructed to the variances that were approved in 1983, and new landscaping regulations were, have been established since 1983. We went to zoning board of appeals, I believe, a month or two ago. We had a survey prepared by Navis and Young identifying the variances that were met back in 1983 as to the location of the building, which we submitted. And then, we went to ZBA with an engineered site plan, asking for a waiver of the requirements of the landscape requirements. We submitted the plan. This drawing reflects the approval and locations of where we want a landscaped property along Dudley Avenue. Again, you can tell by the building setback lines, it's not conforming building. It was tough to achieve the requirements. ZBA did approve our location of landscaping. We had a planting table delineated by Navis and Young. And after we received approval, we met with staff and prepared, and Navis and Young prepared a engineered site plan for PTZ approval. The building, it reflects location of the island, parking tabulation, outside storage. Approval from ZBA was for landscaping and fencing around the property, around the dumpster. So, we're trying to incorporate the intent of what PTZ requested, ZBA approvals, and how the property is best served by my client. So, we're here before you to, number one, ask for approval of the site plan. My client is here, and he'd like to be able to basically enclose the foundation to sit there. Right now, he's in the process of removing tires that are outside. He'd like to be able to put them in this, the new storage area that's delineated where the foundation is. It's got a foundation, it's got a slab. We prepared some construction drawings for a building permit. So, hopefully, this commission will favor upon his, his approval, and he could now basically enclose the building and bring outside tires into the storage building. Here to answer any questions? If we could work with the commission staff and my client and could basically improve the site and get a building permit and continue his business.
Good. Thank you. Commission members, questions for the applicant's representative? Mr. Fitzsimmons?
I guess the question would be through you, Mr. Chairman. Did you review the letter from the town planner dated May 23rd?
No, I haven't received it. All I received was the... I received some comments, but no, I received a sewer letter, but not from the town planner. I know some of the concerns Casey had as, issues she had, but I did not receive the letter.
This is the one that you got before the plans were updated? May, the May 23rd, and then, I got revised plans May 30th?
Okay, then, okay.
So, yeah. Thank you, Sam.
No, no, I know there was, we talked about, I'll be honest, this doesn't reflect all of Casey's comments. I'm upfront about some of her additional requests, which we did not incorporate, which she knows about.
Okay. Then, my question, again, through you, Mr. Chairman, would be, can you, I don't see the, I see the word shrubs still on the plan versus some additional detail on landscaping. I know Dudley Avenue, I know the area quite well. What type of shrubs were you, were you thinking, did I miss that?
Navis and Young through the landscaping department identified the type of juniper spreading use, ten quantities, flowering crab trees, crab apple, two-inch caliber moat and landscaping areas as identified here. So, he just, that's what he felt would be sufficient plantings, and hopefully, it meets your, your requirements requests.
Okay. And then, the other, the other question would be, the town planner talks about unscreened outside storage. This application is meant to address that, those violations and allow everything to be happening inside?
Yes. Again, what we do is we have the trailers which store it, and then, the, I know the request for continued fence around all my client's property. Be honest, some of it is difficult along this area, and my client may address the full screening, but we included the request and requirements both Casey and staff wanted. But, my client may address a couple of that issue if he cares to.
Would you care to address that? And I'm not sure what he's asking you to...
Which one do you want first? You mean, as far as the screening and the fencing?
We have fencing around the three points.
Well, first of all, you have to understand our business and what we do. We primarily work, change tires on trucks, big trucks, tractor-trailers and all that. We have service trucks that go on the road.
Just for the record, if you'd just introduce yourself too, please.
Oh, Ed Nocleario, 530 Center Street.
Good, thank you.
And as a result, we are always constrained already for space, okay? And what we do, we've cleaned up that lower right-hand corner, okay? We've moved trailers out, and we've opened it up because that's where we park our dumpster trailer that we fill up to get hauled away. And keeping up with that is probably the biggest contention, okay? The outside storage of tires, they're not stored, they're only held there until we can get them up on the trailer. And we get them up as quickly and as efficiently as we can. It's heavy work. The other issue is because of that fenced area in the front, is we have a telephone pole right smack dab in the middle. And sometimes, the 53-foot trailers have to back in from in front of the office because they can't make it around that pole. We have people that leave trucks, so we need space to park the trucks, waiting for them to come back and get them. So, there's a myriad of issues with the frontage, okay? As well as, when our trucks aren't on the road, where do they park? Because we have ample parking for cars, but we don't have ample parking for truck, for our own trucks. I mean, you know, that's, that's number one with the frontage. It's very difficult. We're already in somewhat of a squeeze for space. Number two, we're going to put, we only keep one trailer on, on the site, which is only for wheels, nothing rubber in the trailer. And that trailer is parked perpendicular with, with the railroad tracks, okay? And my neighbor next door, E&amp;G Machine, he has a trailer that overlaps into my property that he only stores machine heads, engine blocks and things like that, because he's a machine, he's an engine rebuilder. So, we have that trailer that, you know, the fence would go right where he's pointing, right, right through his trailer, all right? By cleaning up the yard and moving a couple of other trailers that didn't belong to me out of the way, we have much more visibility from the street, and trucks can actually back in right to, to the right side of the telephone pole, as opposed to just on the left side where we have cars and whatnot in the way. And as well, that's our, our parking area for our own trucks also. So, that's the difficulty with fences. Next-door E&amp;G Machine, they have a very narrow driveway, and they use our driveway as a turnaround, okay? Which even their dump, when their, when their garbage truck comes to pick up the dumpster, it's tight, to say the least, for them. So, they, they appreciate the fact that we have a turnaround for them. And they've been there for 30, 40 years also, so that we've been friendly neighbors for a long time. That's on that side of the building. I don't really have too much of an issue with the sideways parking, even though we've been there for 44 years and nobody's ever gotten hit in the back by backing out into the street. But, we, that, that's a minor thing. We can, we can do that. We can move the dumpster that, which is in the front area, oh, down here, well, where it currently is to the back, you know, we can fence that in, that's, that's easy, okay? Then, as you move farther, where the new, well, the warehouse is going to be rebuilt where the existing foundation already is, that gray area, we use that once again for parking trucks and, and things, you know, while we're waiting for... parking trucks and, and things, you know, while we're waiting for customers to pick up vehicles and things like that. So it's a, it's a tight squeeze as it is, and this will make, make it tighter. You know, I want to comply with whatever we can and, and, you know, to get the building up, because that's going to be a big help as far as keeping tires away.
If, if I could, through you, Mr. Chairman, is a follow-up question. I guess the question is on the fence, because when you start talking about, the neighbor has stuff on your property and that's a difficulty with fence, is the plan to put up a fence?
The plan over there is to put in a fence. I mean, if I, if in fact, we put the fence where it is, where it's proposed, he's going to have to move.
Right. And again, that he's not here, but that's not our business, it's our application. And is it the plan that says final privacy fence, or is it a chain link fence? Because what's your plan to put fencing?
Probably build the vinyl slats.
Microphone.
Yeah. For the record, we're looking for a chain link screen type of fence, you know.
We'd have the vinyl.
We show, we show an all equal type of open fence area.
Yep.
But we'd like to do this, the location of the fence is an issue with my client's explaining. So if there was a partial, how we can make it happen? I know, I know what Casey, one of the approvals was a request, screen all the way around. It's tough in this site and how our client uses the property. And basically, the, his building, since it's a non-conforming building, it's tough to fit what he wants, but right now he can. And there may be some constraints that, that hinder him.
Right.
And we're not here to be argumentative, it's just how can we make his business function and be approval, and be a decent looking site, is what we want to do.
Okay. Yeah, the plan shows a fence, so that's what my concern, my question is going to be about privacy slats on the fence. Because you're proposing the fence, we require a fence, the town planner wants a fence, it's in her letter, I just want to make sure there's no misunderstanding.
Well, believe it or not, as you come down Dudley Avenue, and you look at Tri-State on the left, you look into our driveway area, you can look all the way back, which is about, what, 100 feet back to where the junk tires are before they get up on the trailer, okay? Where the fence is going, nobody can see it because the trailer is parked there. And Frank's, you know, trailer is there. So he's kind of blocked, and they've never complained about looking at tires, they've been looking at them forever. So as far as privacy and all that, you know, and he has two trailers in front of their building, which even more blocks the view, so it, it isn't like, you know, if I keep the yard clean, I don't feel there's any need for a fence, but I have to do what I have to do.
The plans show it.
The plans go the fence. So these are your plans, you're showing the fence. So we assume that we're looking at half a fence. So you're kind of arguing against yourself, which I don't think you can anywhere.
I want the building to go up.
Well, again, the, my client never wanted to show the fence, but one of the, basically, approval requirements is fencing around, and landscaping around our property. So we want to at least give you an application which would say meets your requirements, but we're here to this, to tell you why it doesn't make sense for my client to put it in, and maybe there's some leeway to where we put it.
From my perspective, I think I appreciate you putting the fence on the property is required, so from, from my standpoint, I think that's kind of where we are, but the other commission members may feel differently. Mrs. Morgenstine?
Yeah, I mean, a fence is required, a fence is requested, a privacy screen on the fence is requested, and a trailer being parked and blocking our view is not a permanent structure. We not only look at you, but what may come in the future. And you're making a change to a property, so the landscaping requirements come into play as well. So really, are we here with a proposal that you're going to do? Are we here with a proposal?
I have to do it, I have to do it. Yeah, of course.
All right, any commission members, other commission members? Casey, any, any final, any comments from you on the application?
For the most part, I think my comments have been addressed. The one other, I guess, point of, or difference of opinion is that I think there is some room to do, to stretch out that little five-foot island, to stretch that out a little bit further. I'm not sure why it has to be so tiny, because the only thing that can really fit in there are small trucks or cars anyhow. And the approval, the variance approval is for five feet of landscaping, not zero feet of landscaping. So except where driveways are, there should be the five feet. And then the, where the parking spaces that are parallel to the building are, the ones sort of in the middle, I think that's where the office is, where the handicap parking space is and the other two, that has been reconfigured because I, it was due to one of my comments. It was because you can't, as you know, your zoning regulations don't let you back out into the road, so they modified those. So it does open up some room, room for landscaping over there, too. From what I understand, the trucks need some room to sort of get in, so they may need a wider turning radius, but I still think there's some room there. So again, this is another one of those situations where I think they could do and should need to do just a little bit more. But for the most part, my comments have been addressed.
A little bit more, whether or not we determine a little bit more is what we'd like, what we, when you're saying a little bit more, what is a little bit more? And where would a little bit more be?
Well, like I just said, I think that small island near the angled spaces, that is, it's required to be 12 foot, 12 feet wide for a one-way driveway. As proposed, it's 37-ish, 38-ish feet wide. Coming out the other side, it's only 18 feet wide, so it could at least be brought down to 18 feet wide. And the same thing between the, the parking spaces and the, the property line, I think we could pick up a little more green there, too, the ones in front of the office.
Yeah. I guess from my, my perspective, I appreciate your comments, and I'd certainly like to see, you know, additional landscaping, but I guess I'm just looking at this site and what the, what the use is on the site, and I think that that may just make it a little bit, a little bit too tight. Although I appreciate the comments, I don't know how other commission members feel.
I agree.
I, I would agree. And again, it's, I like greenery, but I think this is a, this is a tough strip. So I think what's shown is acceptable to me.
Any other comments from commission members? Again, this is, it's not a public hearing, but if there's any members of the public who'd like to speak on application, please come forward and name an address and comment. Seeing none, just bring it back to the applicant for any final comments before I ask for any final comments from commission members.
No, we appreciate the input from staff and the commission. So I think it just makes sense for the town of Wallingford to get a good-looking property, and the client can have the building function the way he wants. So we appreciate your, hopefully your approval, voting yes.
Okay. Good enough. At this point in time, if there's no further questions from commission members, and Casey had no further comments?
No, just that now that I know exactly what the landscaping requirements are, I'll calculate an estime bond as a condition of approval. It won't be big, it'll just be for the landscaping to go in.
Okay. And now, at this point in time, entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I move the commission to approve a site plan for Mangino to construct a building addition and make associated site changes at 136 Dudley Avenue, as shown on plans entitled 136 Dudley Avenue, M162 BL23, Wallingford, Connecticut Site Plan dated April 20th, 2017, updated to May 30th, 2017, subject to the following conditions. Number one, comments of the town of Wallingford Water and Sewer Senior Engineer dated 6/17. Number two, any fencing around the property or depicted on the plan shall include privacy slats if chain link. Number three, comments of the town of Wallingford Town Planner dated 5/23/17. And number four, application posted estime bond in an amount to be determined by the town planner.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. We have a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
One thing, should we include the comments from the fire marshal dated May 8th, 2017?
Sorry? I believe we should.
As amended, as corrected.
And again, do we have a second on the amended motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen, voting beginning with Mr. Madarazzo.
Yes.
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 And yes, application's been approved. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Our next item, it's a site plan for a 660-square-foot accessory apartment for Hops at 457 South Elm Street. Again, if the applicant would please come forward, begin preparing for his presentation. Mr. Madarazzo, if you'd please note all correspondence for the record.
Mr. Chairman, we have an interdepartmental referral, application 217-17 dated May 8th, 2017, signed by the fire marshal. We have a letter dated May 23rd, 2017, to Jeffrey and Stacy Hops, referencing site plan, application 217-17, from Casey Castella, town planner. Inter-office memorandum to Casey Castella, town planner, from Eric Kruger, senior engineer, dated June 2nd, 2017, and I believe that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Madarazzo. If the applicant would please introduce himself and begin his presentation.
Hi, Jeffrey Hoppus, 457 South Elm Street.
And if you'd please give us some insight in what you're requesting.
I guess I'm looking for a permit for accessory apartment in my basement area. They came to the house and said I had an illegal one there, and that's where I stand right now.
All right, so you're looking, so right now, the, Casey's corrected, the, it's an existing accessory apartment? How long is?
I believe it pre, does it, you did not install the accessory apartment, correct?
Some of it we did.
Okay.
It was for my father-in-law, my mother's, my wife's mother passed away. He moved in with us. He moved out now, and really wasn't using it as an apartment. Somebody came and made.
If you could, sir, if you could just pull that a little bit closer to yourself so we can pick your voice up.
Someone said that I had an illegal rental apartment, but I wasn't really renting it, so.
So there was a partial, just so I'm clear, there was a, there was a partial apartment there, is that correct, Casey? And then it was expanded? Or?
They, they finished off more of the space.
So more of the space was finished off for it?
Yeah. And our zoning enforcement officer became aware of it and went and visited them at the property to do an inspection, so we've, in order to keep, as you know, the components, kitchen or cooking facilities, bathroom facilities, bedroom, sleeping facilities, they would have to get it approved as an accessory apartment.
And so then what they've, what they, what's being proposed now, this would conform to our, our zoning regulations?
It does.
If approved or?
We, I calculated it at 711 square feet, not the 660. I think we just did numbers a little differently, so I believe it is under RREG 711 square feet, but that still complies with your zoning regulations. There is a shared hallway. When you come down the stairs, there's what's being proposed as a shared area that includes a shared washer and dryer area, and there's also a, the hot water heater area. Typically, we have allowed those to be counted as shared areas, and those don't count against the square footage.
Okay. So again, at the end of the day, this conforms.
Yes.
Okay. Commission members, with any questions for the applicant? Yes, Mr. Madarazzo?
Does the space have its own entrance?
Yes.
The, um, sliders that lead out to the driveway. Sliders. And what's the intent of the space going forward?
What's that?
What's the intent of the space going forward?
Nothing. My kid's playroom.
You good?
Yeah. All right, at this point in time, if there's no other questions from the, from the commission, and again, if there's no comments from any members of the public, I assume you've completed your, your presentation, so at this point in time, I entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I move the commission to approve a site plan for Hoppus, Hoppus, to legalize an existing accessory apartment at 457 South Elm Street, as shown on plans entitled, "Proposed Ground Level Apartment for 457 South Elm Street," submitted with the application of May 3rd, 2017, subject to two conditions, comments of the town of Wallingford Water and Sewer Senior Engineer dated June 2nd, 2017, and number two, apartment is subject to final inspection by the town of Wallingford Zoning Enforcement Officer.
We have a motion on the application, we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen, voting beginning with Mrs. Morgenstine.
Yes.
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 And yes, application's been approved. Have a good evening. All right, Casey, if you'd just bring us through the, I guess, the rest of our, our agenda.
Sure. Okay, bond releases, the St. John's Student Center is ready for release.
Do we have a motion to release the, the bond for the St. John's Center? St. John's Student Center?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend, I move that the commission approve the release of the bond being held for the special permit associated with Chote Rosemary Hall for the St. John's Student Center, as recommended by the town planner.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Cohen, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and abstentions? And it brings us to number 14, which is 824, it's a review of proposed lease of landfill for solar energy project, a letter from the mayor.
Yep. This is, the town is proposing to lease a portion of the landfill property to a solar panel company, or to be used as a solar field. It will tie directly into the grid, so it's under the jurisdiction of the siding council, not any of the local land use agencies. But the actual lease agreement does have to be referred to this commission for a recommendation under section 8-24. So whenever there's land being leased, this commission has an opportunity to consider that, the use of that land. It's something that's becoming more common and is sort of popping up. Meriden did this on their landfill. The zoning board of appeals approved a solar field over in the Meriden Markham Airport not too long ago. You have a smaller field over on the Chote property. Certainly there aren't, this isn't going to get used for anything else in the foreseeable future, so.
Any commission members have any questions on the, on the request? So this, and so what we would, we would certainly not be acting on to approve it, just simply to?
To recommend or recommend against.
Just recommend or recommend against. So do we have a motion for many commission members on this request?
Mr. Chairman, as requested by the office of the mayor and recommended by the town planner, I move the commission act favorably on the request of the mayor's office regarding the review of the proposed lease of landfill for the solar energy project, as outlined in his letter to the, to the chairman dated June 7th, 2017.
Do we have a second on that recommendation?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? And moving on, Casey.
Okay, next is a request from Mr. Dean Attali, that you take up discussion regarding building height in the CA6 zone. I believe Mr. Dean Attali and his representative are here to discuss the matter with you. I guess I'll reserve my comments until they've.
I'm sure if you gentlemen would like to come forward, I guess what I'd really like to have is a very brief discussion on this.
Vincenzo Dean Attali, 8 Taylor Lane, Wallingford.
John Walworth, 28 Laurelwood Drive, Wallingford.
And if you could just please give us a brief overview of what your request is?
The request is for the commission to entertain the concept of increasing the building height in the CA6 zone from three to four stories, for 30 feet to approximately 46 feet. The reason being, we, we believe that's in concert with the plan of conservation development, which asks for a higher density within the downtown to encourage more investment with mixed-use projects, in this case residential over retail, and to begin the discussion toward a zone change.
Good. Casey, would you like to make any comments before I ask commission members?
Yeah. I mean, I've, I've made this position known before, and I'll make it known again. I think that doing this piece me- I think that doing this piecemeal, the longer we continue to revise these regulations in a piecemeal way, the longer we're delaying actually being able to pay attention to modifying the regulation for the downtown in a more cohesive way. I think we're in a position, we talked, I think, at the last workshop about starting to schedule some workshops to discuss the CA6 or downtown town center zoning regulations and TOD regulations. And I just, I think that it's hard to, as, as you, or at least some of you know who sat on the commission during the incentive housing zone process, the building height was a somewhat heated discussion. So I think that when we're discussing building height, that needs to take into account some of the other elements of lot and bulk requirements, building form requirements, general use requirements. So I, I just, I am not a proponent of moving forward with just modifying the building height. You know, I think we did it with the parking, and I think that was something that was somewhat urgent, and everybody felt was sort of on the front burner and needed to get addressed quickly. But I, I think now is the time to start looking at the regulations as a whole. I'll, I'll do whatever the commission opts for, but that's my position.
Thank you. Other commission members? Yes, Mrs. Morgenstein.
I, I would see this as also somewhat urgent. We have the train station nearly built, and we're behind every other town in the area. And if we're going to get these developers to invest in the lower part of downtown, they need to be able to build what they can make money off of. I, I, I see this as something that needs to happen, and I would also add kind of a personal preference that may be kind of aside from this, but because we're looking at buildings that are smaller, so they're more difficult to fill with retail, because we're looking at one-story structures that may well be replaced by four-story structures, I would ask our developers, as they're coming in, to look at the architectural detail of our town and really try to find a way, and I, I know you want to, keep in keeping with things. I, I think about the building where Tata's is and those very interesting brick works. Finding ways to leave nice facades, but yet go up, really trying to keep, keep the look, but allow us to gain the height, I see as a valuable asset. It's the only way that we're going to get the lower downtown to develop. We, we say it all the time, we've got out-of-town owners, we've got multiple separate buildings that are not big enough to be filled. These guys want to build in Wallingford, but they can't, given the way we are right now. So I do see this as an urgency.
Just to clarify my position, I, I think that changing the zoning regulations for the town center are our top priority right now. It was one of the most urgent, or most immediate recommendations in our Plan of Conservation Development. I think we're all in, in agreement about that. I just don't think we should stop and do height, and then stop and do coverage, and then stop and do, because they all have impact on one another. That's, that's how I see it, but that's, you know.
Other commission members? Mr. Cohen.
Yeah, I, in this case, I really agree with Casey on this one. I, I think they really need to be, you know, the regulation, the regulations really need to be looked at as an entity and not piecemeal, because, you know, the, the town really has to have all the pieces work and fit together, so I'm, I'm really leaning towards Casey's concerns.
Anyone else? Mr. Simmons?
First off, I'm, I'm a big supporter and fan of downtown. I think, you know, as I always say, the regulations are a living document, we have to keep updating it. I could support the concept of this, but I think I would agree with, with the town planner, with Jeff. I, I think we have to look at it as a whole. You know, we're, you know, we're on the verge of summer. We've worked a lot on, you know, the, the transportation plan, the implementation of the POC. This is a fall project, you know, if we want to set a workshop now with the idea that, you know, we could solicit other things to look at in relation to implementation of the POCD, but I think this certainly would be, this certainly would warrant conversation as a whole when we're talking about the downtown regs, so.
I'd agree.
Yeah, I would also agree with those comments. Again, I, I just don't think we want to start doing things piecemeal. And I guess, Gina, as far as your comments, when you're talking about, you know, our, our downtown, I think our incentive housing district takes up a, a good part, I think, of that downtown, which does provide for, you know, a little higher density, higher large, taller buildings in some of the areas. Is that not correct, Casey?
Yeah, well, I think locally, when people say downtown, they mean the bottom of the hill. So the incentive housing zone does occupy much of that area at the bottom of the hill. Obviously, we've, from what we've seen, nothing has really happened with the incentive housing zone. So as part of the zoning regs, that's one of the components we need to sort of revisit and see what we can do to maybe make that a little more workable. We internally have been meeting and talking with a lot of developers, and we're also working with the state to try to, they have a project going on around our, sort of around the various downtowns, around the station too. So we are trying to learn and react to what can, what is best for the town, and will work for the developers at the same time. But yeah, the incentive housing zone does allow for that higher, slightly higher density, the slightly higher building heights, but it hasn't seemed to work so far, so.
Yeah, again, I think one of that reasons is, I think Mrs. Morgenstein pointed out, you have a lot of smaller properties, and you need to, you know, you need to assemble the properties. And I think, gentlemen, that's generally the approach that the commission is looking to do, is, you know, to look at, look at this on a more comprehensive basis than doing things kind of piecemeal, you know, one, one item, then moving to another item, and then moving to another item. It just, to me, that doesn't, I think, to most of the commission members, it just doesn't seem to make sense.
Yes, just to add, since this is a discussion, when originally we came for a zone change on CA6, it, it did, in fact, back in January 2016, encompass a number of different items. And the emergency was then picked out to do just the parking. So it, it isn't necessarily that we're promulgating, doing a piecemeal, although the, obviously, the, the height change would in fact do that. If there was a way, since parking was to be expedited, and it took us all a year to kind of iron that out, if there's a way that we can collapse that type of schedule to make this a fall project, that would be fantastic. There's a lot of, a lot of work that needs to be done, architectural, you can't say architectural reviews, but you say building standards and the like. But if there's anything we can do to help in moving that along, we'd be happy to.
Sure, I guess with that, I would, would encourage you to have your conversations with, you know, with our town planner, I think, as, you know, she mentioned, she's, she's had conversations, correct me if I'm wrong, Casey, with other individuals, in, in looking to, again, start to formulate some ideas as far as putting together really an overall comprehensive, you know, plan for our, you know, what, our downtown area, being the uptown, downtown, and the middle town.
Yeah, and in both Mr. Walworth and Mr. Dean Atali have been into my office a lot to talk about these issues, and certainly their, their input and insight is, is helpful. And, and, you know, I do understand that, I mean, I fully agree that we want to, we want to move forward with this, and I think that in the long run, the faster way to do it is all together.
True.
Is there, excuse me, but is there a way we could set a, contemplate a timeline, or a?
Again, that's something-
A target?
Well, I guess, I don't think at this particular point in time, we're in a position to do that quite candidly. Again, I think that that's something that, you know, we can certainly have, you know, have conversations with our town planner. You know, we've talked about this, and looking to start, you know, having some workshops on our, you know, our downtown and having a comprehensive plan. Although I think as, you know, Mr. Fitzsimmons had mentioned, or maybe didn't mention, you know, we're getting into kind of a, a slow time, or a busy time for some, and a slow time for others as we start getting into the, you know, into the summer months. But I would, you know, encourage you to, you know, to speak with our, you know, our town planner about that, and Casey can certainly come up some ideas to present to us. But at this point in time, I don't feel comfortable saying we can do this by here, and this, and by the end of this, you know, timeframe, we'll be ready to go. I would certainly hope that it's, and I would not anticipate that it would be, you know, the process that it took with the parking. But there's, I think, as Casey mentioned, there's a lot of components that go into it. So, I guess that being said-
I will say, I think also, we have had other, you know, as other smaller zone changes or other things have, we're putting a lot of those to bed right now. You're, I think we're sort of rounding the corner on your digital signs, the neighborhood business district. So that, I think, gives us, both the commission and my office, the opportunity to focus more on this, and we can try to, over the next couple of months, sort of develop a game plan.
And then, just as you know, I mean, we're not builders, we're property owners, and we've made an effort to assemble and get together and to react with the plan of development concept. And so it seems like it makes more, it'll take more time, and so maybe at this point, we would almost disassemble and maintain our properties. Like you pointed out earlier, we have parking lots that need repair, and so here, we would have to do short-term fixes as we wait for a regulation, a more focused approach to take assembled pieces of properties that are underdeveloped, and we wait. And it, it seems, you know, our, it seems like, it's a little unfortunate that it's clear that plan of development, and we're ready to go, and we're anxious, and we want to redevelop, and we want to make it neater, but the regulations aren't in place. And the parking regulations were a huge success. They work, we've looked at it, it works. And when you look, and not to give it much detail, but when you look at a three-story, at a four-story, well, if you're going to build something that would accommodate elderly or handicap, you need to justify an elevator, and two-story over retail doesn't work. So what we face with is that, you know, that's, this is a great concept, it's wonderful. We've been here for years with you all, and, you know, we have self-interested a couple of properties, but we've been reaching out constantly to the other property owners. They don't come anymore. It's, it's maybe, they don't have that patience perhaps, but we would hope that there was something sooner rather than later, if not, we take what exists that pre-existed, work with it until there's that regulation. And our fear is that once some investment goes into these pre-existing structures, then our timeline shifts, and we're maybe five or 10 years out after the regulation. So we, we were hoping that maybe it's sooner rather than later, but, you know, we appreciate the effort, and whatever you can do would be great, and if not, we'll, I guess we do our own thing as well. I mean, there's nothing really we can do except maintain what exists. You know, we have pieces of property, and the regulations, the parking regulations are a great starting point, but we can't use them. Can't, we can't do anything. So, you know, we appreciate the effort of this commission, but we're going to have to take what we have and maintain it, like everybody else does, a pre-existing property, until there's a regulation. I mean, there just isn't anything for us to use.
Good enough.
All right, thank you.
Well, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Moving on, Casey.
Okay, Neighborhood Business District. I don't know how deeply you want to get into this tonight, if you do or not. I provided you with several potential locations for Neighborhood Business Districts. Some of them, many of them, have some existing business components on them already, sort of serve as Neighborhood Business Districts in their actual land use now. Some of them do not. Those, I was thinking about, largely about what the intention of a Neighborhood Business District is, and what purpose those would serve. So ideally, we would have a little Neighborhood Business District sort of in each region of town to serve those purposes. So some of these may be, you want to add a property, you want to take out a property, you don't like them, but I don't know how much you want to get into that conversation tonight. That's entirely up to you.
I guess from my perspective, first of all, my printer ran out of ink, so I didn't print those out. It'd be great if you could make copies of them for me and put them in the mail. And then I saw you gave us, you know, a, a follow-up here-
Yep.
On each property.
Yeah.
So I know, at least from, you know, from my perspective, I really haven't looked at it.
Okay.
And I think what you've given us this evening would be certainly more helpful, and when you put that in the mail-
Okay.
And I have, it'll make it-
Okay.
Even more beneficial, and I would doubt if many of the commission, maybe you have, you know, probably really had an opportunity to go out and visit, you know, all of these, you know, all of the properties.
Yeah.
But I appreciate you putting it, you know, putting it all together.
Sure. So I will mail these out to you, you have to, our secretary was not here today, so your receipts are getting mailed out to you also. You only have two, and they're both relatively minor. So we could put this on next month's agenda to talk about, or you could-
Yeah, I would, I would like, no, I would like that, well. I think, given the fact that the agenda is, we, there's only two submissions, although we, we had, we have had some items carried over. I'm not sure as far as the items that have carried over, as far as how significant those may or may not be. My general sense is they may not be. So I, I think that instead of scheduling a workshop, I would just be more in favor of having this on our, on our agenda as another discussion item for our next, next month's meeting.
Okay, and-
Does anyone agree with that?
Maybe what we could do is, if anyone has thoughts or comments you want me to be able to address or look at or react to ahead of time, if you want to send them to me. If I get any, I'll amass them and sort of include that in your next round of packets.
Sure, sounds great.
Try to get us towards public hearing.
And if you take us through, well, obviously, our next item, we don't have all the commission members here, our election of officers.
It's time for the next election.
Yes, that's right. And if you just take us through-
Sure.
Reports of officers and staff, please.
Sure. So you had three administrative approvals. I'll just ask if you have any questions about those, or you want me to go over any of them? Okay. ZBA decisions, the, only ZBA decision from May was the approval of the, an expansion. It was a special exception of a daycare area to have a day camp program. There are several items on for next, or this month. The one that I want to point out to you, you discussed previously, number 117-009, 1163 South Broad Street. That was the one where they were proposing to make some sort of vertical expansions and raise the roof area of the building, but the variance was to allow all of the non-conformities on the site to remain. Since then, they have brought some of this, some of their proposal up to compliance. The remaining, the outstanding issue that they would, at this point, still need a variance for, is there about five spaces under for parking? I do think there's room for them to make the parking. It would require an expansion, it would require some site work, it would require an expansion of their parking lot. So the question is, you had previously sort of issued a report to the Zoning Board of Appeals, whether you want to comment further, or sort of leave your previous comment as is.
Comments from commission members?
Reissue the comment, reissue the comment, right?
Yeah, I think that, I guess, Mr. Fitzsimmons, I think, suggested, and I would agree, just reissue our comments. It seems if they're able to do something, there's not really a hardship with the land, if they're able to do it, then there would really be no need for variance, other than they don't want to do it.
Okay, okay. And I think that was the only one that I wanted to review with you. Yeah, that was the only one that I wanted to review.
Thank you.
Okay, and then you have your zoning enforcement log. I will leave that up to you, questions, comments, concerns?
Any questions for Casey on our zoning enforcement log? Seeing none?
And then finally, just as a comment, you have two attachments that are FYIs on the table in front of you.
All right, thank you, Casey. I guess with that, we've concluded our business, and I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, we're adjourned. Have a good evening, thank you.